Welcome, everybody, to the Tuesday, May 4th, 2021, Carrick County Board of Education Meeting. I'm happy to see so many people here. It's been a long time that I've seen this many people here, and it gets me fired up that maybe we're slowly easing towards more normalcy. With that said, I am going to have Mr. Travis Day do the pledge and the invocation.
My pledge is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Bow your heads. Dear God, we are thankful for this day we've been given for its blessings and its opportunities. We pray for wisdom, strength, and guidance as we make decisions about the education of our children today. Thank you. Amen.
Thank you, Mr. Day. Now, I would like to recognize Mr. Perry Harker, Mr. Ed Stack, and Mr. Bucky Oliver with the Carrick County Public School Foundation.
Thank you.
Is Ed going to be here?
I think you and I are.
He's coming around the corner.
He's coming around the corner. Okay, there he is.
Good evening. It's a pleasure to be here tonight, and it's an opportunity. I want to introduce myself. I'm Perry Harker, and I'm Chair of the Carrick County Public School Foundation. I have Vice Chair with me, Mr. Bucky Oliver, and Board Member Ed Stack. We are bringing some exciting news tonight, and it's somewhat befitting in that we're here on Teacher Appreciation Week to talk about the opportunity that we have been working on to support teachers. Carrick County Foundation was formed 10 years ago to, and has worked quietly behind the scenes to support teachers, employees, and their families. The foundation is served by a Board of Volunteer Members, 12, of business community leaders in our community who are committed to supporting the activities and purpose of the foundation. Through the years, the foundation has provided support to individuals such as food, housing, medical care, and other related support. Too many to name in this period of time, short period of time. It's invested in our employees by providing funds for specialized training for our teachers and specialized instructional materials that may be needed in the classroom. The foundation is committed to and values the school system's employees and is now poised to strongly support the county's teaching profession.
My name is Bucky Oliver, and I'm glad to see you tonight. And again, just to look over the overall perspective, there have been 74 different funds established within the foundation itself. 20 are active today. Very close to $1.6 million has been philanthropically donated through the foundation and invested in our local school system. Most of the funds are designated funds, so it is someone who has had a particular love, a particular program, a particular school, and they had designated. But a portion of the funds have also been undesignedated. Tonight, we are very excited because we think it's a major change and a major improvement to announce what we're calling the Carrick Teaching Fellows. This will allow senior high school members across the county to receive a full scholarship at a North Carolina university, basically by making a promise to commit to teaching in our district for four years. It's a win-win, and I personally have been thrilled to see it from the foundation level, and I give all of the effort and all the spontaneity, if you would, to Dr. Jackson for introducing this concept. And we're, and the foundation, as Ed will comment, we're very excited, and I hope that you'll be that way, too. I will say that everyone, it takes a village, and everyone has been working on this project, including, if you would, raising the funds, including members of your board, Catherine. So thank you again for your help in doing this and for your support, and we look forward to working with you in the future with this.
I'm assuming you're clapping for me, not for Bucky. I appreciate that. Sorry for being late. I was actually on a Zoom call in Dr. Jackson's office. We're doing faculty awards at NC State University tonight, and so I'm multitasking. As soon as I finish here, I'm going to get back on that Zoom call. Over the last few years, our nation, our state, and our county have seen fewer students entering the field of education. There's no question about that. Number of students graduating from colleges and entering the teaching profession continues to decrease. The foundation recognizes that and believes that this shortage of teachers will impact the quality of education that our students receive. We want the Carrick County Public School System to continue to be the best in the state. Tonight, we representing the Carrick County Public School Foundation announce the Carrick Teaching Fellow Scholarship. This month, the foundation will select one student applicant from each of the county's traditional high schools who plans to major in education and will fund their four years of college. The selected students will repay the scholarship by teaching in the Carrick County Public School System a minimum of four years upon graduation from college. Applications will be coming out soon. By May 12th, they'll be in councilor's offices. This is super important for us, obviously, from the foundation perspective, from the school perspective, from the county perspective. Our kids going off to school, coming back home, that's what we're shooting for, that's the target of this program, and that's what we're excited about. Dr. Jackson?
Thank you. Board members, I could not be more excited about this. You see, as I arrived, I encountered the Education Foundation and encountered the work of the Education Foundation, and I shared with the board that I had never encountered an education foundation like the Carrick County Public Schools Education Foundation, a foundation that is taking care of students and teachers and community members by doing things like helping to pay for roofs when hurricanes took them off or replacing appliances so that clothes could be washed. Absolutely amazing. And when the board asked, "Dr. Jackson, what do you see as a role for the foundation?" My first statement was, "I don't want to mess anything up because of the incredible things that the foundation has and is accomplishing in this community and the amazing support that it provides for our school system, our students, and our teachers." But I did say, "I do have an idea, a dream, if you will." I said, "I would love to see a scholarship where students from this school system received their tuition and books and fees, and in exchange, came back to teach in our school system akin to the North Carolina Teaching Fellows Program that used to be much larger." The foundation board said, "That's exciting. Can you give us a presentation?" And so I pulled something together, thinking that maybe in a year or two years or three years perhaps, we would be able to announce that. However, the members of the board of the foundation are such that, I was a bit surprised, incredibly delighted when they said, "No, we're not waiting three years. We're not waiting two years. We've secured the funding to be able to announce this this year." So we are scrambling, and it's a good scramble. We're working with Mr. Whitford to get the paperwork in order, and by May 12th, we'll have each of our three traditional high schools, the applications. The logistics of the program are such that we're using our community partner, one of our great partners, Carrick Community College. And so our students will be able to, the first two years, be a part of the new Teachers Academy that they have at Carrick Community College, we're so very proud of, and then they will be able, the students will be able to choose any of the North Carolina public universities that they would like to attend, and they will receive their tuition, their fees, and their books. They will be responsible for their room and board. However, several of our public universities now have completely virtual options. Some of that existed before the pandemic. It all exists during the pandemic. And so a student in Carrick County could actually go through and earn their bachelor's degree to become a teacher without ever leaving Carrick County, thanks to the generosity of the foundation. There will come a time when the public will be asked to also help support. We'd love to see this completely endowed, and the foundation's working on that, and perhaps later, we'll talk about the gala that's coming up that the foundation is doing. But this evening, I'm excited to say to you that three graduates from Carrick County Public Schools this year will graduate with a full tuition, covering their room, their tuition, their books, and their fees, not the room, the books, fees, and tuition, and be able to come back and teach in our school system. And it's thanks to the board members, some of our board members are on that board, and the community support we've received. And so we're excited and delighted to announce this for the first time this evening at our Board of Education meeting.
Thank you all so much. We appreciate everything you're doing. All right, next on our agenda is the opportunity to go outside and read with Dr. Jackson and recognize the Croatan High School Men's Soccer State Champions. Everybody's welcome to go outside. Congratulate them.
For all state band, they have to first audition for all district band. And these auditions were held virtually in January. And we are pleased to announce that Carteret Public Schools had eighty-six winners, more than any other school system in the Eastern District, which are all the schools east of I-95. We dominated. And we had winners from every one of our high schools and every one of our middle schools. So it was truly county-wide winners. Approximately one-half of the middle school band consisted of students from Carteret County. And one-fourth of the high school bands consisted of our students. So that was at the district level. So the students that were at the top of the district, they go on to audition again statewide. And so the students we're introducing you tonight not only scored at the top of their district, but they also auditioned against the top band students from the other six regions of the state. These are our All-State Honors Band winners. Paige Sanoski at Broad Creek Middle School. She was the first chair bassoon player, middle school student in the state. Next, we have Emily Gorman, also from Broad Creek Middle School. She plays the clarinet. The band director at Broad Creek Middle School is Mr. Brian Edmonds. Next, we have Vin Lee. Vin is a freshman at West Carteret High School. And he was the first chair, the top flute player in the ninth and 10th band for the whole state of North Carolina. Ainsley Jones is also a West Carteret High School student. She is the second chair alto saxophone for the 910 band, second chair for the state of North Carolina in the 910 band. Their band director at West Carteret is Andy Wright. Patrick Rendell from Crowican High School is a double winner. He is the first chair alto saxophone in the 11th and 12th grade band. And he's also the first chair winner in the All-State Jazz Band. This is the third consecutive year that he has been number one in the state, the number-one saxophone for both All-State Band and All-State Jazz Band. Michael Self is his band director at Crowican High School. We also had one other student from Morehead City Middle School, Hilton Najin, a bass clarinet player, is also an All-State Band winner. He is sick tonight, but it's non-COVID-related, so we're happy about that. And so he is unable to be here, and we will make a presentation for him at Morehead Middle at a later date. So congratulations to All-State Band winners. Y'all smile.
Well done, y'all. Nice job.
Whoa, 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 we got one more parent. We got another one.
Come on up.
If y'all could go where you want the room to take a picture. Perfect, very good. All right, very good. We are moving right along. What an incredible night we're having. So now I am going to read the Carteret County Board of Education Resolution Recognizing Teacher Appreciation Week for the week of May 3, 2021. Whereas teachers mold future citizens through guidance and education, and whereas teachers encounter students of widely differing backgrounds, and whereas our country's future depends upon providing quality education to all students, and whereas teachers spend countless hours preparing lessons, evaluating progress, counseling and coaching students, and performing community service, and whereas our community recognizes and supports its teachers in educating the children of this community. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Carteret County Board of Education proclaims May 3 through 7, 2021 to be Teacher Appreciation Week, and be it further resolved that the Carteret County Board of Education strongly encourages all members of our community to join with it in personally expressing appreciation to our teachers for their dedication and devotion to their work. Adopted the fourth day of May 2021. May I consider a motion to recognize this week as Teacher Appreciation Week?
So moved.
We have a movement by Mr. Day. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
We have a second by Ms. Chadwick. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes unanimously. We will now move on to my next resolution, which is to support the Future NC attainment goal. Whereas My Future NC is a statewide nonprofit organization focused on educational attainment, and is the result of the cross-sector collaboration between North Carolina leaders in education, business, and government. And whereas the My Future NC Commission has concluded that North Carolina should have a goal that 2 million North Carolinians will have a high-quality credential or post-secondary degree by 2030. And whereas Carteret County Public School System is committed to inspiring education, educating, and empowering students for life through relationships, knowledge, and opportunity. Whereas Carteret County Public School System agrees that North Carolina faces a gap between the projected needs for citizens with high-quality credentials or post-secondary degrees and the attainment of those high-quality credentials or post-secondary degrees. Now therefore, be it resolved that Carteret County Public School System supports the attainment goal of My Future NC that 2 million North Carolinians should have a high-quality credential or post-secondary degree by 2030. And Carteret County Public School System, along with leaders in business, education, state, and local government, and community organizations, will continue to foster partnerships to achieve the goal. Adopted this the fourth day of May 2021. Do I have a motion recognizing and supporting My Future NC?
I move to approve the resolution to support attaining My Future NC as presented.
I have a motion by Reverend Goodwin. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second by Mr. McLean. All in favor, raise your hand. It passed unanimously. Very good, thank y'all. Now we will move on to consideration of approval of the meeting agenda.
Mr. Chair, I move to amend Section 8 of the agenda to include under closed session consideration of a confidential attorney-client matter pursuant to General Statute 143-318, 11A3.
I have a motion to amend the agenda, Section 8. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second by Mr. McLean. All in favor, raise your right hand. Very good. Now I will consider a motion to approve the amended agenda.
Make that motion.
Ms. Chadwick has made that motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, Ms. Altrow has seconded. All in favor, raise your right hand. Very good. Amendment agenda has been approved. Now we have a public forum, and we do have one speaker. So I'm going to read this long public comment disclaimer. It is now time for public comment. Anyone present tonight wishing to make comments should have filled out a form. And as long as COVID social distancing restrictions are in place, we are also accepting written comments that will be at least partially read to the board, and the full text presented to the board if within the bounds of public comment. To ensure civility, relevance, and time management, there are specific requirements for public comment set forth in school board policy. They include: Comments are limited to matters pertaining to public education. The speaker shall state his or her name at the beginning of his or her comment. For melee comments, the administrator reading the comment will identify the author. Speaking time will be limited to three minutes per person, including the reading of a melee comment. Assistant Superintendent Richie Paylor is our timekeeper. He will hold up a yellow card when the speaker has 30 seconds left and a red card when the time is ended. No speaker shall make obscene remarks or issue personal attacks or insults. No complaint against a school employee or student will be permitted, although this may be heard in closed session at a later date following consultation with the superintendent. Much information about individual students, including a speaker's own child, is confidential under state and federal law, and we discourage and often prohibit such information in open session. The chairperson may immediately terminate any comments that violate these rules. Board members will not respond to questions except occasionally to request clarification. And with that, our first speaker and only speaker tonight is Mr. Chris Yeomans.
Three minutes. I never spoke for three minutes. My name is Chris Yeomans. I'm currently retired principal from Carteret County Schools. Dr. Jackson and I met earlier. Retired in 2018. That's part of my time, so I got to keep going. Reason I came here today, I was wanting to talk about classified employee salaries. And there was one thing that was on my heart when I was a principal, is that how important our classified people were. Recently, I've been doing some volunteer work for Ms. Debbie Piner. And some of y'all know Ms. Debbie Piner. Ms. Debbie Piner is a retired office manager at Smyrna. And when I was principal there, she was my office manager. And what got us on this conversation this week, as I was working at her mother's house, she's got some issues going on, was that there's an opening at Smyrna School for that office manager position. And so Ms. Debbie and I were talking. I said, are you going to come out of retirement? She said, no. And anyway, to make a long story short, I said, how much, you know, do you think that position pays? And she said, well, when I retired with 30 years in, I was getting a little over $11 an hour. Okay, so I did some research to see what the starting pay was. And I know, from what I understand, when I left, there was a tier process for classified people. And I think we've probably followed that. I see some heads nodding. But from what I understand, the starting pay for that important position at Smyrna School is just a little over $11 an hour. And I think we can do better than that. Our classified people are so important, and you know that. And I, you know, then you got to think, where are you going to get the money from? I can see you. But I want you to keep trudging ahead to look out for our classified people. Just a little sidebar here. This was just a, I'm not a contractor, and don't call me to do any work, please. Because I'm retired. Anyway, her mother's house, her mother's 96, and the house was built in 1955, and there's some rot issues. I had to go to Otway Hardware to buy some material. And as I was, the little fellow 16-year-old, he's loading my tuba fours and stuff in the back of the car, and there's a "Help Wanted" sign out front. I said, how much you get paid? Because I might come here and work with you, you know? He said, $10 an hour. Otway Hardware pays $10 an hour to our 16-year-old that's putting tuba fours in the back of my car so I can, you know, go do some volunteer work. And we're starting at our office manager that would do all the books, and I would sign those. And I can tell you now, I didn't look. She all had it, she had it right. And if I got in trouble, she got in trouble. I hope they put us in the same cell, because I was going to beat her up. You know, I mean, what a mammoth task they had to, at a school, and how important. And not just those folks, but all our classified people. I think, you know, I know the budget is well beyond, and I think we've probably got this year's kind of settled. But as we start talking about next year, and, you know, please think about our classified people. And, oh.
And one more, 30 seconds.
I want to brag about Carteret County Schools. My daughter Caroline went to Harkoz Island Elementary School. She graduate East Carteret High School with valedictorian. Went over to East Carolina, and she's graduating Friday with a doctorate degree in physical therapy.
Awesome.
Carteret County Schools, not bad.
Thank you, Chris.
Thank you so much. All right, moving along, I now need a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Reverend Goodwin has made the motion, and Ms. Wheatley has seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Very good. Consent agenda has been approved. Now we are moving on to Mr. and Ms. Jody McLennie to receive curriculum and instruction update.
Good evening, Board. Thank you so much for giving me a few minutes to talk about what I'm most passionate about, and that's teaching and learning in our schools. You have seen students, you have heard. Carteret County has always been at the top of the state in what we do, and we continue to prove that, and we will continue to push forward that, even in spite of the challenges that we face coming out of this pandemic. So just for a few minutes, let's talk about what we're going to do as we move forward. I think it's important that we acknowledge some non-negotiables as we move forward. There are many factors that have impacted our students and their ability to engage in the classroom and to succeed in the classroom. And so we have to acknowledge those factors and events that have led us to this moment. However, I want to challenge us to not look at this from a deficit mindset, but let's look at it as an opportunity for us to examine our practices and then to move forward and provide our students with the best education that we can. And we're going to do that because we have the best people in our school system that show up every day committed to our students. And so we are going to capitalize on that greatest asset, our people. And we have to know that we have to possess an urgency in this moment to have great purpose, intention, and action in what we do. So how are we going to improve learning outcomes for students when so much has been thrown at our students and at our teachers? It's going to be important that we focus in four areas. And so the four areas that will improve learning outcomes for our students are curriculum, what do we learn, instruction, how do we teach that, the environment, how we set up the learning environment for students. And then we have to take into account what every learner needs, because every student matters regardless of where they go to school or what they're facing. We are committed to all students. So we are going to approach this post-pandemic phase in a three-phase strategic approach. The first phase being the promise phase. This is where we examine what our core beliefs are as a system when it comes to teaching and learning, and then how we put into place instructional guarantees to ensure that all students maximize their potential. After we examine our beliefs and set those instructional guarantees, becomes the persist phase. We have to identify those key areas and components for how we accelerate growth. There is a wealth of knowledge and research in how to do that. And we have to be certain that we're practicing those strategies and skills each day in our classrooms. And after we identify those key areas, we have to create a sustainable plan through strategic short-term and long-term goals. So let's talk about that promise phase. What does that mean? We have to define what the culture of instruction is in Carteret County in this moment. We've got to look at the theories that underpin our practices. We have to examine, do our curriculum and our materials align to that culture of instruction? And then are we sure we have the systems and supports in place to ensure that all team members that work in Carteret County Schools can support all students in their highest-quality learning experience? We are already doing that through critical conversations with all stakeholders. We are completing a current needs assessment, belief surveys, and then looking at our current data, where we are at this moment. Phase two is my favorite phase. This is where we look at what really works in our schools and how do we define it? And so we're going to look at four quadrants. Quadrant one being instructional theory. That is about research. Quadrant two is about what happens in the day-to-day happenings in a school. We're going to look at data analysis in quadrant three. And then quadrant four, we're going to look at how do we support the people to carry out the mission that we set forth? So instructional theory I mentioned is about research-based rules and ideas and principles that have been tried and true in the classroom that we know are going to yield high results for our students and accelerate their growth. Then we're going to examine what are those instructional imperatives, the practices that we put in place each day to promote achievement. Data analysis, we are good at collecting data, but we want to make sure we're collecting the right data and using that data to drive our instructional practices to accelerate growth. And quadrant four, which may be the most important, how do we remove barriers and obstacles that keep our educators from doing what they need to do in the classroom, which is teach our students? And then phase three, we're going to persevere. How are we going to address this unique opportunity moving forward? And so we're going to set short-term goals, where we focus on strategy and planning. We involve all stakeholders in the consistent monitoring of our plan. And then we have clear and consistent communication with everyone. And our long-term goals are we have to have a vision and mission alignment that is consistent through our county, an ongoing review and reflection of our plans and goals. And then, as with any operating organization, we have to be able to change course correction when we need to address our needs. And so why is it important that we take the time to be very detailed in our approach to student achievement? It's because through an integrated approach, we can guarantee that all students have greater access to a high-quality schooling experience. And we know that every student in our county deserves that. And we are committed in Carteret County to providing that to all students. And so that's just a little picture of what teaching and learning can look like. And I want to transition for just a second to an opportunity we have for our students in our county. We are going to offer a summer learning extension program called Camp Shine. Shine stands for serving, helping, investing, nurturing, and engaging our students. This is a K-12 school extension learning recovery enrichment program for at-risk students. For students in kindergarten through second grade, we will provide reading, math, enrichment, and physical activity daily. For students in grades three through eight, we will have reading, math, science, enrichment, and physical activity every day. And then for our students in grades nine through 12, they will have in-person instruction in our end-of-course exams, an opportunity for credit recovery, and an elective. We will provide meals, breakfast and lunch, free of charge every day. We will provide transportation. We will also have onsite and in-person social-emotional support that can be delivered through counselors, our social workers. Our nurses can be present as well. This is a voluntary student participation program. And so it is up to the families if they would like for their student to participate. We will also implement daily individual and/or small-group instruction to target specific needs for students. And we have actively been recruiting highly effective teachers to work our summer program. And I will say, as of right before this meeting, we had 239 employees in the county that have applied to work, which is fantastic. Awesome. There are some rules that are in our program about kindergarten retention. If a kindergarten student participates in our summer program, the state of North Carolina says that student can be exempt from retention. All other students that participate in grades 1 through 12, their retention eligibility will be looked at at the end of the program to determine if they can remove that retention label and they can be promoted. We also are required to administer K-8 competency-based assessments at the beginning of the program and at the end of the program. This is not a new assessment that we have to administer. Our K-8 students are already taking this assessment throughout the school year. So it's a very quick assessment that gives us very valuable data into that student's learning profile. And we will report that information to the state at the end of the program. So Camp Shine dates and times. We have two teacher workdays on June 9 and 10. And then our camp will begin on June 14 and will run through July 29. We will take the week of July 5 through the 9 off. And our time is from 8:00 a.m. to 3:15, Monday through Thursday. So our students are going to be getting six and a quarter hours of instruction a day. We cannot count hours for lunch or physical activity or transitions in that. And so our students will have the opportunity to receive 150 total instructional hours per day. We want to talk a little bit about estimated attendance. We still don't have a guarantee as to how many students are going to come. We have enrollment happening now in our schools. When we look at our early data, we anticipate that we are going to be inviting 471 kindergarten through third-grade students, fourth through fifth, 212, grade six through eight, 353, and then students in ninth through 12, 515, for a total of a little over 1,500 students a day. We've had very successful summer programs in the past through our Read to Achieve camps. And when we look at why we've been successful in that, it's because we've been certain to have smaller group sizes. And so when we look at an average size in our K-3 of one adult to nine kids, and then from grades four and up, we're looking at one to 13 kids, it comes out to cost about $44.81 a day. If all 1,500 of those students come, that's a total cost for a summer program of $1.7 million. However, the government or the legislators said that we would use our ESRS II funds for that, and that is required in that fund as well. So that is an estimated cost. We do encourage our families to participate. We want to make this as unique and as fun as we can make this and engage students to help fill in some gaps that have been created due to COVID and make sure that we're setting them up for success moving forward. Are there any questions at this point?
Ms. McLennie?
Yes, sir.
Is this program for a student that failed a class? Or is it for a student that didn't get as good a grade as they thought they could, and they're like a C and they want to be?
Right, so we are required to offer it to what's considered at-risk. So our administrators have set the criteria for the first wave of at-risk. So for elementary, they have four different criteria, looking at benchmark, and their DIBBLES and TRC, which is in-depth with their basic skills. And then our middle schools and high schools are looking at middle school failing a class or performing below on those benchmarks. And then our high school has the criteria of failing class. So to answer your question is, we have to offer to the at-risk first. If we have space available after that, then we can open it up to enrollment to other students.
And it erases the original grade?
Correct, for the credit recovery.
Completely, okay. Thank you.
So are we limited to 1,500 kids?
We are not necessarily limiting. That was just for budget-purpose planning.
Okay.
So if we have more that want to come, we'll figure it out.
Great.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, moving right along. We've got Dr. Jackson, and we're going to talk about ESRS II and III funding budget.
Thank you, Board members. What an incredible night when we have the opportunity to recognize our students, to recognize staff members, and then even have a retiree come back to speak up for current staff members. That really speaks to the history and the reason we have such incredible success in the school system. And so I'm just absolutely delighted this evening to just be a part of the system. This evening, Board, you have the opportunity to consider our budget so that we may submit that by the end of the week for ESRS II and III. That's federal funding. And so I want to spend some time sharing with you how the budget for your consideration has been put together. Certainly seek any feedback you may have. And then, should you feel so led, would recommend that you approve the ESRS II and ESRS III budget. So as you know, at the beginning of this year, we received ESRS I funding. At the time, we knew it simply as ESRS, had no idea there would be an ESRS II or even an ESRS III. For our school system, based on our school system size, we received just over $1.6 million. We were required to have that funding encumbered by September of 2022. That funding will be almost completely used by the end of this school year because that funding was used for things like technology devices, for the personal protective equipment that we've had to purchase in each of our schools to keep our students and staff safe and healthy, et cetera. ESRS II funding for our school system amounts to just over $6.1 million, almost $6.2 million. That budget is due May 7, the end of this week. That funding has to be encumbered by September 2023. So we do have some time to spend that funding as we have received it. The ESRS III planning allotment for us is just over $13.8 million. The ESRS III budget does require that at least 20% of that budget is specifically to address learning loss based on what's happened in the pandemic. That budget is, of course, due at the end of the week. There is an encumbrance requirement of September 2024. Of course, with any budget, we submit our budget, and as needs change or opportunities develop, we certainly have the opportunity to make revisions to a budget later. develop, we certainly have the opportunity to make revisions to a budget later if we need to do that. But certainly, we want to do a great job putting together a budget to guide our efforts throughout, particularly when we've had this much federal money that's been sent to the school system for a very specific purpose. And so as we look at this very specific purpose of this federal money, in the funding, there are three prongs that very clearly state what this funding is for. The first is to reduce the impact of COVID-19 on our young people, dating back to last March of 2020, when our schools were closed for the first time through this entire school year. The second prong is to prevent the spread of COVID-19. And so the budget for ESRS II or III could be used for mitigation efforts if we needed to do that. The third is to respond to the effects of COVID-19. And that's where that learning loss piece comes into play in terms of meeting the needs of our students, whether that's academic needs primarily, or social-emotional, mental health needs, et cetera. And so there are allowable expenditures that were listed in the funding, things like addressing learning loss, we've talked about, things like facility repairs, the opportunity to improve air quality, coordination of preparedness and response to the coronavirus, providing principals and leaders with resources in the building, addressing the unique needs of special populations, like exceptional children, et cetera, improving preparedness and response here in the school system, training to minimize the virus transmission, supplies to sanitize and clean our schools, long-term closure activities, we certainly hope that never happens again, education technology, mental health services, and then summer planning. And so those are all examples of what would be allowable, certainly not required, but certainly allowable expenses in the ESRS II and ESRS III budget. As I read over things like training to minimize virus transmission, supplies to sanitize and clean, I would like to pause for a moment, simply to say that one of the requirements of the school system, when we transitioned to Plan A, our middle schools and high schools, was to report our data to the ABC Collaborative. As you know, we've been reporting our data in a very transparent method since the August when we opened up. All of that data is on our website. Very proud of sharing that information. I'm proud to share with you that we've continued to report on a weekly basis. I actually submit that report. We've had zero cases that we're aware of in-school transmission throughout this entire school year. That's a credit to our teachers, the men and women who serve in our school system, and also to the mitigation efforts and using the PPE. And so I'm very proud of our schools and all that they're doing to keep us healthy. And so that's keeping the building sanitized and clean. And everybody pitches in. Many, many times this year, I've watched as our teachers are cleaning desks between classes. Yes, sir.
And if I'm not mistaken, we reported more than we were asked to report. I mean, we gave all of our numbers. Is that correct?
Yes, sir. In fact, there's very few districts that report to the level we do. But this board was very clear that you wanted to make sure our community could send their children to our schools, knowing they would be safe. And part of that was sharing that information. And so I'm proud of that work and appreciate the Board of Education for requiring that of our administration and staff. So yes, sir, we are reporting much more than is required. As we move into the receipt of just over $20 million and thinking about how to best use that almost really one-time, once-in-a-generation of students opportunity to mitigate the impact and the effects of the coronavirus, we've engaged in a very comprehensive process to involve our stakeholders, those who are on the ground doing the work. And so we had needs assessment interviews with the principals. Jody McClinney, who you just heard from, our chief academic officer, met with each of our principals and talked about what are our needs in this school, in this learning community, very unique and individual schools, as you know, throughout our county. We also, in that needs assessment by school principals, they conducted the needs assessment, working with their faculty and staff and their parent advisory councils to identify the needs in their schools. From all of that data, and it was quite comprehensive, three themes emerged. The first, the need for instructional support positions, to be able to help our teachers in delivering instruction in the classroom. The need for high-yield instructional practices or programs. Certainly, no one would advocate for spending money for some random program, but research-based programs that we know will meet the needs of our children in our unique situation. And then social-emotional student support, and really for our staff as well. And so those themes emerged, and that guided our work as we began to put together the ESRS II and III budget. And as the board knows, we then, in our board committees, had the opportunity to share with you an early draft of the budget, to hear from you as our elected community officials, our elected community representatives, to help us in putting together the ESRS II and III budget proposal. And so this evening, first of all, the first line item you just heard about, that's the summer learning program. All of those requirements, I heard almost a gasp when we talked about the length of that instructional day. That's a long day for our students, but that's required by the state of North Carolina. It's required by our state to use this funding to pay for that summer learning program. And so to the question of, would we allow more than 1,500 students to come to school? Absolutely, we would love that. We're going to work really hard to get 1,500 students to school because we know they have those academic needs. And so we're encouraging our parents and families to take advantage of it. But that first line item, that $1.7 million, is just that, to fund the summer learning program, Camp Shine, and by the way, I love that name, Camp Shine for our students. One of the things that I heard, or saw the smiles through your mask from the board, is the number of staff members who have signed up to serve in that program. We know that it takes quality teachers and instructional staff to really make a difference. And I appreciate this board last month authorizing the use of a $1,500 stipend for our staff members who participate in that summer learning program. Now, you notice that amount is blank. It's put there just as a placeholder so that we can share with you that will happen. However, we're using the local portion of our summer school budget that was already in our annual budget. We'll be able to fund that. And so we're very delighted to be able to do that, to have the staff members we need. This next line item, student devices, an allowable expense. As you know, our students at home had to connect, and thankfully, this board had the foresight to begin a one-to-one digital learning device program. And so our students were able to start learning quicker than students in other parts of the state where they may not have had that opportunity. Those Chromebooks or laptops, they have a life expectancy, typically a four- to six-year life expectancy. Some of our Chromebooks are approaching eight years of age, and so they need to be refreshed. A big number of our Chromebooks, in fact, 4,500 of them, we actually have, thanks to the funding from our county commissioners, on a technology lease, which was a five-year lease. And so the 2021, 2022 school year is the fifth year of that five-year lease, and those devices need to be replaced as well. And so in the ESRS budget, you'll see the student devices, it's a $3 million cost over time. What we're looking at is purchasing 3,500 devices to replace those oldest devices in our school system this summer. And then the following summer, once the remaining 4,500 have gone past their five-year life expectancy and are ready to be replaced, we would then replace those. What that does for our county is we'd no longer need to ask for at least five years for that technology lease, which would free up that money for our county commissioners to use in other ways. And so I appreciate that the breaking down the devices into two purchases instead of one helps us with a sustainability plan because this helps us right now. We need to make sure we're in a place to take care of it in five years when those devices need to be replaced as well. The next line item is staff devices. Our teacher laptops are getting some age on them as well. They need to be replaced. And so we're proposing that we would replace those in the summer of 2022, which aligns with the expiration of that technology lease. The cost for that's approximately $1 million. The next two items are curriculum items that were asked for specifically by our elementary principals and their staffs. The first is Intermath, which is a K-5 program aligned to the Intereading Program that you know that we were able to roll out this year after piloting it in three schools that were frontrunners in that. We've just heard continued feedback from our teachers about how much they appreciate Intereading. We actually have a school or two schools piloting Intermath, and we're hearing that feedback as well. And so this funding will allow us to move to Intermath as our K-5 mathematics program. Foundations is a program where we do, among other things, teach phonics, basic grammar skills, certainly something very important. And so that'll allow us to roll out Foundations K-3 throughout the school system. The next line item is the COVID-19 supplement. I very much appreciate and want to say thank you to this board. When I presented last month, I think Ms. McClinney may have started the presentation, a possible budget. The board seized upon that supplement as a way to say thank you to our staff for all they've done this year. And so you approved a $500 supplement that went to all staff members who are working at least halftime and prorated if needed. But we very much appreciate that, and that's going for the staff. And hopefully, you've heard from some of our staff members, I certainly have, about how much they appreciated that. And I appreciate this board already moving on that item. And so that $750,000 is in the budget, and that's the funding that you approved last month. The next line item, teacher and staff recruitment and retention, $750,000. That is a placeholder to be used by the Board of Education for one of the two things, perhaps. One, either working with the county commissioners to perhaps be able to increase our local supplement for our certified or classified staff members, or to be used as a one-time stipend. And so we'll work with the county commissioners to see what may be possible and then be able to have that funding to assist with that work, and we certainly appreciate that. The last item on this slide is probably the item I've heard most about, and that's the teacher furlough days, the teacher assistant, rather, furlough days that we've used in the school system. We've had those teacher assistant furlough days for many years in our school system, essentially five days out of the school year. Teacher assistants or instructional assistants do not work, and they're not paid for that. It was a cost savings measure that was put in place some time back. By using the ESRS II and III money, we'll be able to, for the next three years, go ahead and fund the additional five days. So our instructional assistants will then be back to a full calendar. What that does, of course, is allows us to offer them professional development, to be able to really assist and continue to assist our teachers to have the training they need. And certainly, that'll help us address learning loss. In an elementary classroom, for example, if you've had the opportunity to visit a classroom, you may see a teacher working with one small group, some students working in centers independently or small groups, and then an instructional assistant working with another group. And so anytime we can have small group size or one-on-one opportunities, we certainly improve the opportunity for student success. And so I'm very excited about having that as a potential item in the ESRS II and III budget. Moving on, the next item is professional development, COVID-19 response. This professional development item is limited to working with all of our staff throughout the school system on social-emotional and mental health support to help us improve on our ability to meet the needs of our students, things like mental health first-aid training for all staff. I've participated in that professional development, found it very helpful, to be able to know what to do when a student cries out for help. It's something that you may not have experienced before in terms of a student who's worried about whether or not they should continue in this life. And so helping our staff be ready to support that student in that moment and get them the help they need. Professional development around virtual teaching, we are much better at teaching virtually than we were in March of 2020. We're not there yet. We're still learning, and so professional development for that certainly will help. And then professional development around high-impact instructional strategies, particularly as we contend with the academic year the students have had in terms of the needs they continue to have as a result of that. The next line item is our contracted nurses. There's eight of those, and that's to continue for the next three school years. That's an item of $1.3 million. Certainly, it has been extremely beneficial this year, and one of the reasons, perhaps, that we've been so successful in keeping our schools open was this board's foresight in contracting with those nurses through the early funding we received, so that we are almost to the point of having one nurse in each of our buildings. We do have a couple of shared situations in small schools, but that's been extremely helpful, and so this funds that for the next three years. Adding four counselors to the school system allows for help with our professional school counselors. Back in the day, we called them guidance counselors, and I'm trying to learn, it's professional school counselor. Our professional school counselors sometimes are really spending a lot of their time helping students choose classes, and they're helping the students with paperwork, college applications. They're helping students with many things that may not be related to the student's mental health and well-being. And so adding the four district support counselors who will be assigned to schools allows someone to help with some of that paperwork piece so that we can actually spend more time counseling our students. The behavior support position is $200,000. We currently have two in the school system, and so adding a third certainly becomes a benefit to each of our schools. We have an English learner support person who works part-time. This next line item, that contracted EL support person, that allows us to fund that position for the next three years. The next two line items are teacher assistants, curriculum and intervention teacher assistants. So this is actually directly speaking to that item that bubbled up from our schools, which is having more instructional support personnel available to help our students. And so the first item there, the 22 curriculum intervention teacher assistants, excuse me, it's just over $2.3 million. And the way we've set that up was that essentially, we would assign them on a 1 to 50 student ratio for at-risk students, which would amount to at least one in our small elementary schools and up to three in our large elementary schools. The second item is the curriculum intervention teacher assistants, 10 of those for our secondary or for our middle schools, and that price tag is just over $1 million. And that number is 1 to 85, which gives us at least two for each of our middle schools. As we talk to our high schools, and so the first teacher assistant line item is elementary schools, the second teacher assistant line item is our middle schools, this next item is our high schools. Our high school principals and teams identified a need for a certified position around curriculum intervention. And so that gives us the ratio of 1 to 50 of at-risk students. And so there are three positions at $540,000. And then the last item on this slide is four exceptional children teaching positions with a price tag of $720,000, which will certainly help us with our caseload. Finally, the final slide, as we work through this budget, the next three items are around virtual learning. We currently have 1,183 students who are 100% virtual. We are not yet sure what that number will be going into the next school year as parents are making their decisions about that. I'm sure some of that will be context-related. However, knowing that, there's the potential for a large number, we want to make sure that we're prepared to meet the needs of those students. Certainly, as we begin to grow a virtual program in the school system, there is the potential opportunity for students who may be currently participating in homeschools or other sorts of educational choices, they may choose to participate in this. You are aware that the General Assembly has a number of bills that they are considering. One of the bills that's been getting some traction was going to not allow virtual programs or virtual academies unless you had a school number for that virtual academy or virtual program by May 1st. We learned that on April 29th, April 28th. And so to the credit of Ms. McClinney, Mike McKay, Kathy Carswell, and our team, we got on the horn, worked with DPI, and we have a school number. So we don't have to use it, but we have it. So we have crossed that T and dotted that I. I'm very proud of our team for making that happen in a quick hurry, as my daddy would say, and I do appreciate that. And so these items allow us to serve those students. The first is a virtual learning director. If we do go the route of a virtual school, and that's a decision to be made later, we may or may not want to do that, a principal would be provided for that school, just like any other school. For now, we're working on the concept of a program, and so a director would be leading that work. There's also funding, that's $300,000, to cover salary and benefits for three school years. We're also working or adding funding for 20 middle school and high school core virtual teachers. The amount of that budget item is $3.6 million for elementary school. We have been able to identify, as you know, the reason we're able to go Plan A five days a week is enough virtual teachers in the school system, so we don't need to add positions there. And then there's a line item of $675,000, and that's to cover virtual electives available through North Carolina Virtual Public School, which is the public school. It's not the virtual charter school. They have courses that are available. And then funding also, and something I'm really excited about, that would actually allow us to contract with our teachers to develop high school courses here in Carteret County Public Schools that we could then teach. And so the first years or the first semesters, they're developing the course, they would receive a bit more funding because they're developing the course, and then the course would be there for us to use, which is much more cost-effective than actually getting that course from North Carolina Virtual. And so that line item is $675,000. The final line item is the indirect cost, which is, in keeping with the operation of the Board of Education, with federal monies, we have the opportunity to realize or receive those funds and indirect costs for perhaps utility bills, et cetera. And so that budget proposal, board members, I certainly recommend to you. Again, if there are needs to revise in the future, we certainly... to revise in the future, we certainly have that. But that does come to you as a recommendation from myself and from our cabinet team on behalf of all those who've been involved in the budget creation. Mr. Chair, be delighted to answer any questions the board may have.
If I have any questions, thoughts, or comments. If there's no questions, then I will take a motion to consider the ESRS two and three funding budget that Dr. Jackson presented.
I move to approve the ESRS two and three funding budget as presented.
Reverend Goodwin has made a motion. Do I have a second? Mr. McLean has got the second. All in favor, raise your right hand. Very good. It has passed unanimously. Very good. Thank you so much, Dr. Jackson. I appreciate everybody putting the time and effort into that. Next, we have Mr. Richie Paylor and the Bond Projects update.
Good evening. First, I'll give you an update on our chiller replacements at Bogstown Elementary School and Beaufort Middle School. The chillers have been installed and they're up and running. They do need to do some tweaking on the computer side, but that's supposed to happen this week. Tomorrow, we hope to fire up the chiller at Morehead Elementary School. That's going to be a factory startup for warranty purposes, and we hope to get that up and running tomorrow. So that's a, a big relief. Some of you may have heard about that school. It hadn't had air conditioning for three weeks, but we'll, we'll fire that up tomorrow. Also, the chillers for West Carter High School and Morehead Middle School are on the way. They stopped off in Wilmington to get a coating to protect against corrosion, but we hope they're here next week. And the installment will begin at Morehead Middle School as early as, in just a couple of weeks. So that's the chiller replacement schedule. For other bond projects, the height group, myself, Mr. Moretti, and the colorful group have met a couple of times just to tweak some plans. We hope to have some floor plans for stakeholders to look at in, in the near future so that we can get feedback and move forward with that. Any questions?
Have a great job, Mr. Paylor, as always.
Thank you.
All right, next up, Dr. Jackson is back up again.
Thank you, Board members. Good evening. It's hard to believe that we've arrived at the final month of the 2020, 2021 school year. It's certainly been a year full of challenges, but it's also been a year full of successes, as our principals, teachers, and staff have worked together to overcome those challenges and ensure that our schools continue to meet the needs of our students. This is Teacher Appreciation Week. Our teachers are the backbone of our school system. Without them, without their dedication and willingness to do whatever it takes, we would not be one of the highest-performing academic districts in the state. They would tell you that they could not do their job without every other member of our school system team, and I agree with them. I don't want to fail, though, to acknowledge all that they have done this year in growing as teachers and having to teach in new and different circumstances. They are absolutely remarkable. I'd like to acknowledge and celebrate two teachers this evening. First, Ms. Katie Davis, social studies teacher at Croatan High School, we've just learned, has been selected as the Federation of North Carolina Historical Society's State Teacher of the Year. Mrs. Davis helps to bring the past to life in our classroom, and we're very proud of this accomplishment. I'd also like to acknowledge Mr. Christopher Murray, who's a sixth-grade science teacher at Broad Creek Middle School, who's been selected by the Swansboro Rotary Club for this year's Excellence in Teaching Award. I had the privilege of being present when Mr. Murray was surprised with the award announcement. I watched as the entire sixth-grade class, we were outside and socially distant, I watched as the sixth-grade class at Broad Creek Middle School absolutely erupted with shouts of excitement and happiness for their teacher, who, by the way, told me he went to class in those classrooms 20 years earlier. That doesn't just happen, though, that excitement. The students were so excited because Mr. Murray, like his peers across our school district, worked hard to build authentic relationships with his students and our students. Board members, I'm looking forward to joining you on May 14th for the employee celebration bus tour, as we announce the winners of the Carteret County Public Schools Teacher of the Year, Certified Staff Member of the Year, Classified Staff Member of the Year, Assistant Principal of the Year, and Principal of the Year. And we'll certainly send you more details about the bus tour. By the time we meet next, we will have celebrated end-of-the-year promotion ceremonies and graduations. We will have enjoyed band, chorus, and drama productions. We've gone through end-of-the-year testing, and we'll be able to say that together, we have been, we are, and we will remain Carteret Strong. Mr. Chairman, this concludes my report this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Jackson. Do I have any comments, thoughts, or statements from anybody on the board tonight? Very good. I guess it comes down to me. And the only thing I want to say, I want to recognize the Carteret County Public School Foundation. Very quickly, I happen to have the opportunity this year to sit on that board. And, you know, Dr. Jackson, I'm glad y'all are here to hear, hear me out in the public, because Dr. Jackson presented this idea about, you know, growing our own teachers. And one thing I've learned is that one of the reasons this little county is one of the best school systems in the state is because many of our teachers are homegrown teachers. They're people who started here. We've got some administrators in here who were born and raised here, who went through the school system. And it's just a phenomenal, phenomenal program that he came up with. But more importantly, Catherine Tadwick is on the board, and she is the heartbeat behind this. She, she got on, on board with this and got everybody fired up. And so I, I'm very appreciative of what she's doing to make this happen.
Momma, everybody.
Well, yeah.
Along the way.
Just a little bit, but in a good way. It's in a good way. So thank you, Catherine, for what you're doing to keep everybody fired up. And I'm so very excited about this. And I, I'm just so very appreciative of the community we live in. So with that said, our next regularly scheduled Board of Education meeting will take place Tuesday, June 8th, 2021, at 6:00 p.m. This meeting will be broadcast live on our YouTube channel, and I'd love for y'all to come back next time. We'd love to have you. So with that said, can I have a motion to go into, oops, we've got to go into a closed session, and I need someone to make that motion.
Mr. Chair, I'll make the motion to go into closed session pursuant to, and I can't read it because I don't have my readers, but.
General. Yeah, the general.
So would that be a double motion, or how do I do that? Is that a motion?
His motion.
Read it, yeah.
His motion.
Motion by Ms. McLean. Do I have a second?
I will second, Mr. Chair.
I have a second by Ms. Wheatley. Y'all in favor, say aye, raise your right hand. Very good. We are in closed session. Thank y'all.